Diane, you want to give us on the air?
Oh, yeah.
I don't want you guys to do this without all the fanfare that you deserve. All right, it looks like we're on the air. I, uh, we have a special presentation to make today, and I'd like to have Scott Sanders and Alan McKinley come up. The transition, the new to the old, the old to the new, whatever.
I don't like the old part.
You don't like the old part? Uh, I want to read to all of you a press release that, uh, that came out that I think the city of Des Moines should be very, very proud of and all of our citizens as well. The certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to the city of Des Moines, Iowa by the Government Financial Affairs Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report, the CAPER report. This certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individual department or agency designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAPER. This has been presented to the Finance Department of the city of Des Moines, Iowa. CAPER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAPER. The GFOA is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately seventeen thousand five hundred government financial professionals with offices in Chicago, Illinois, and Washington, DC. And I want to present this award to Alan McKinley and Scott Sanders, who represent the city of Des Moines. Either one of you have something to say, I'd like to have you step up. Congratulations. Let's give them a great big round. [applause] Any words to add, Mr. Dowell?
Well, this will be, um, my, uh, last time to receive this as I've, uh, moved down to the city manager's office, and Scott Sanders here is the, uh, new finance director. Uh, he came on board, uh, early March. This is a very important document, uh, for the city of Des Moines to have, and we've received it for thirty, thirty-three years, uh, in a row. This document is read, uh, nationwide and worldwide as we sell bonds, for instance. Rating agencies, Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, are very interested in making sure that we receive this type of, um, achievement, uh, by the Government Finance Officers Association. Um, particular, um, appreciation should go to, uh, the city's, uh, controller, Sherry Saul, our, uh, chief of our, uh, accounting division, Tim McCarthy. Uh, they really lead the project, lead it each year to get it done. And of course, it goes even beyond that to all of the employees in the city of Des Moines who, uh, um, are involved in any kind of operations, um, that we follow all of the audit guidelines and specifications, and so really this is a reflection of all employees at the city of Des Moines.
I would just add quickly, I'm very appreciative to have such competent staff and professional. Uh, as you can imagine, the city of Des Moines, we have literally hundreds of funds that need to be managed with tens of thousands of transactions each year. And so it is our accounting department that's in charge of making sure that those are done properly. Uh, and not to get an idea that accounting is stagnant in any way, there are new rules that come out every year about procedures, and so they need to stay on top of what those are and make adjustments and work with all of the city staff to make sure those are compliant. So we're, we're very appreciative of their hard work and guidance on this, um, and I'm just enough, I'm honored to take over the finance.
Let me, let me add one more thing that I think is so important. Uh, certainly, we're proud of our staff and all the work that they do, but what does that mean to us as citizens and taxpayers? What it means essentially is every time that they come in here and we have a bond sale, uh, we have, and, and we continue not only to have good accounting practices that receives awards like this, we also have rating agencies that give us ratings on, on how we handle our finances. And in part because of this, we pay lower rates, which allows our dollars to go farther for us to do more and better projects and, uh, to benefit the city of Des Moines, whether it's streets or sidewalks or sewers or any of the other things that we do in this city that are supported, uh, by bond issues and, and others. So thank you very, very much for the, from the city, uh, council and also from our citizens. We appreciate all the great work that you guys are doing, and we count on you to continue, uh, receiving such high awards. So let's give them another hand. Thank you. [applause] We'll start our city council meeting in just a moment. All right, I want to welcome everybody to the Des Moines City Council meeting for July 11th. Uh, we had a great presentation for the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement, so again, congratulations to our finance department. And before we start this evening's meeting, we're going to have a invocation in this evening that's going to be given to us by our own council member, Christine Hensley. And for those who would participate with us, we would ask that you stand at this time.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to, um, read from the book, "Living Inspired," a short, uh, passage. "Living inspired means living every moment with an openness and freshness, expecting the unexpected and finding unimaginable wealth and joy in the simple things of life, which in this day and age is hard to do." Thank you.
Yes, clerks, take role, please. Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore. Grease. Mahaffey. Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, our second item this evening is to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Uh, there will be one-
Are you adding a, an amendment?
Yeah. There'll be one amendment, there's going to be a, um, one extra item.
I'll move. Seven, yes?
Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are the items, for those of you in the audience, are three through forty. I'll note that item, uh, four A has been withdrawn, inspections are incomplete. Item thirty-one, uh, was added, it's council communication number eleven dash four seventy-five, and item thirty-seven was corrected, uh, the amount changed to six hundred and seventy-nine thousand and eighty-two dollars. Um, also this evening, uh, council member Moore wishes to speak on four P, uh, five B, and five C. And is this nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, Mr. Moore? There are no other, uh, requests to speak. Does anybody have any other items in items three through forty?
I'll move the remainder of the consent.
All right, the remainder's been moved.
Seven, yes?
All right, that takes us to item four P. Item four P is approving an alcoholic beverage license application for the following, and P is the Locust Tap at four thirty-four East Locust Street. They are requesting a C to renew a C liquor license. Uh, Mr. Moore?
Um, I would like to have this item continued until the, uh, first meeting in August. Um, there have been a lot of issues surrounding the Locust Tap. Uh, some of them have been cleared up, uh, some of them haven't, but the, uh, the latest was that, uh, Brian and I received an email which, uh, the ban there supposedly at one in the morning was chanting that a resident, uh, was a hoe, and I think that that, uh, kind of put us over the top. Um, what I would like to do is have staff put together a meeting with, uh, Mr. Blunk and his attorney, um, Chair and Vice Chair of the HEV, possibly me and Brian and some staff, so we could hammer out some sort of an agreement on the issues around that place before it comes back in, uh, August.
Okay. It's been a motion then to continue to the first meeting in August, uh, but we have already approved the balance. Anyone in the audience have anything to say on that?
Mayor, just to clarify for people watching at home, uh, maybe, uh, Jeff or Rick can weigh in on what happens in this thirty-day period. It's my understanding they can continue to operate.
Right.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. That is correct. They would, uh, continue to operate, uh, as a licensee, um, as long as their application is on file and their insurance, uh, is on file and remains in effect during the period that council does its due diligence and acquires, uh, additional information during that period of investigation.
Okay, with that?
Seven, yes?
All right, that takes us to item five, which is public improvements ordering construction of the following, B, uh, which is one of the items to be pulled for discussion, which is the Locust Street landscape repairs receiving bids, uh, seven twenty-six eleven, and setting the date of hearing at eight-eight-eleven. Construction estimate is a hundred thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, council communication number eleven dash four sixty-four. Mr. Moore?
Well, originally, I'd pulled this to talk about, uh, several missing county plaques, and, and Rick, in a letter response to me, said that those are going to be replaced at a later date. I'd just like to make a statement that this is a good example of why we should be trying to hire local architects, landscape architects, contractors, anybody like that. This was designed by somebody on the east coast. I had to sit in on some of the meetings, and that gentleman wouldn't listen to anything staff had to say, and consequently, uh, our residents are ones who are standing under the arch on this, and I don't like it. And I will move it.
Seven, yes?
Item five C is the two thousand eleven ADA sidewalk ramp program contract two, receipt in the bids of seven twenty-six eleven, setting the date of hearing of eight-eight-of-eleven. Construction estimate is three hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred dollars, council communication number eleven dash four thirty-eight. Again, Mr. Moore?
On the, uh, construction estimate, line eleven, it shows that there's going to be tree root grinding at two locations. Um, tree root grinding is nothing that should be taken lightly. Um, in some cases, maybe the tree ought to be removed. Um, sometimes there's other alternatives. I would like, um, staff to work with the new municipal arborists on this and see what alternatives we have and see to it this is a case-by-case basis.
Do we do these kind of programs?
Pardon?
So you want them all on case-by-case to be reviewed?
Oh, I think they absolutely should be.
Okay.
I'll move five C.
With that, addendum?
Yes.
Okay. You need to mo, vote, Mr. Moore?
Seven, yes?
All right, um, setting date of hearing on nineteen is on the vacation conveyance of a portion of the Waveland Golf Course property to Russell D. Parks in exchange for a comparable parcel of land adjoining Cummins Woods, seven twenty-five eleven. A is communication from the Chair of the Park and Recreation Board. Mr. Moore?
You read twenty.
Okay, well, and it's twenty also. Might as well take twenty, we'll go back to nineteen.
Okay. I would just like to know, um, I think this is a good exchange. I think we're getting a better piece, parcel of land. I still don't understand how we're going to do the gating and fencing, um, up there in the, uh, the tennis area, and I was wondering if we could have an explanation as how that's going to be handled.
Can we bring that back when we have the actual hearing, or can we get an answer before the hearing?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, council members, I, I understand that question, I, and I've had similar inquiries about staging processes during construction and so on, so, uh, if it's acceptable to all of you, what I'd like to do is put together a comprehensive response on all those issues and get it back to you. Uh, all you're doing this evening, uh, on this item as well as nineteen, is to set the date of hearing, so we'll have that information for you at that time.
I'll move twenty and twenty-eight.
I, I do want to reinforce, uh, what, what you just said, Rick, and I know you and I have talked about this in the last week, about how that is staged out there, the construction equipment, where construction workers park. Um, we have a city parking lot right there, um, but I don't think it's very fair to the residents that that is consumed, you know, day and night by construction workers, um, that get a free parking and staging area, um, especially if it's located in a place that creates a serious detriment to the people that live there. So I'd, I'd like our best thinking about how that works before, um, you know, before we're prepared to vote on it.
Mr. Coleman?
Seven, yes?
Uh, on nineteen, on the vacation and conveyance of a portion of Glendale Cemetery to the Franklin Field Senior Apartments, LLLP, for a hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, that hearing will be July twenty-fifth of eleven. Mr. Moore?
Well, this is for those that are watching on TV, and I'm sure we're all going to receive these calls. Could you explain just exactly how we came up with this price on that property? I know people are going to say it's worth half a mil or a mil, but-
Mr. Moore, uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, the number here was derived on an estimated fair market value. Uh, I believe I'm going to look at Jeb here since it was done in engineering, I believe we used a independent appraiser to do it. And so we used a, an appraiser, uh, to, uh, make, make a determination as to fair market value. For, for those people who are watching, uh, we are obligated by law, and I think the city attorney will confirm, uh, when we sell city property, we have to sell it at fair market value. Uh, and we, we made that determination based on a, an appraisal performed by somebody independent from the city staff. That's how the numbers drive.
Thank you. I'll move nineteen.
Seven, yes?
Item twenty-one, on the proposed amendments to the second two thousand eleven-year action plan, two thousand ten, two thousand fourteen, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, consolidated plan, on eight twenty-nine eleven, council communication number eleven dash four sixty-eight. Mr. Moore?
This also includes the, uh, scrub program, and it's probably one of the most favored programs that the neighborhoods have in the city. However, I've got some concerns over it because, um, we have the option of going to- However, I've got some concerns over it because we have the option of going to the transfer station and the compost site, but in some cases, we also have dumpsters out at individual neighborhoods. And I ask the question, what is that costing per year to do these neighborhood scrubs? And I think that we need to take a hard look, and I know I've heard from neighborhoods they don't like this. But if the CDBG money is dropping, the day may be coming when we just have the transfer station and the compost site. And I know I've heard from a lot of people, well, I'd have to drive across town to get there. Well, some people have to drive across town to get to the zoo, or the airport, or wherever else. And I think that we need to take a look at this, get some projections. I do know, I believe Mr. Kozitz is here. Could you tell us what it costs to do the scrubs at the transfer station and the compost
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, my name is Pat Kozitz, the Deputy Public Works Director. Councilmember Moore is right, the neighborhood scrubs are very popular, however, they are expensive. Our total program costs about $235,000. Neighborhood scrubs alone cost about $80,000. The difference comes in the economy of scale that we get. At our compost park and at the transfer station, it's far more inexpensive to process a ton of debris than it is at a neighborhood scrub. So what we do now, if a neighborhood begins to fall below 50 tons on their consolidated scrub now, we notify them that by the next year, we may have to consolidate them, and we have issued to a couple neighborhoods this year. So little by little, we look at larger consolidations, a program we started a number of years ago with Mr. Moore's help. And hopefully, that'll continue to get a better economy of scale. But if the funds drop, there's more and more reliance on the Soloway's Enterprise account, and it becomes, begins to be a service that's hard to fund. Thank you.
Do you know what the average daily cost is for the transfer station and the compost center on a Saturday?
Thank you, yes. The cost there is really rather inexpensive because the infrastructure is set. You just need one person to take it, push the debris up, and it's processed during regular working hours. So we're down to probably a couple thousand dollars a day on something like that, and yet a neighborhood scrub can run us as much as 7,500.
Which neighborhoods have we consolidated?
Over the years, we've consolidated.
But I mean, the ones that you've given notice to this year?
Well, most recently, one, I believe a letter went to the Waterbury Neighborhood Association, and I believe one other, and I don't recall who it is.
And what was the other one?
I don't recall who the other one is right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But, excuse me, did I say Waterbury? I meant North of Grand. I apologize.
North of Grand, that was, not Waterbury.
That's right, North of Grand, because the quantities just aren't there. And I think the reason is because people are finding the convenience at the transfer station and the compost park to be a far better solution than offloading and throwing into a six- and eight-foot-high dumpster. They just push it off the back. It's really convenient, safe.
But in some cases, the individual scrubs are almost four times as much as if they were going to the transfer station and the compost site.
Absolutely. Much more expensive, but that's where the program originated. A lot of people are beginning to voluntarily use these other sites, and that's what's drawing off the tonnages in the neighborhood scrubs. And I think they do it for convenience and certainly more cost-effective.
I'd also like to point out, there have been numerous neighborhoods that have already given up their scrubs, and they did that to enable us to add more through the year to where it's one every month for, what, six months, seven months?
Yes, it's the third Saturday of every month for 10 months in a row, and especially the northeast neighborhood area. They gave up in favor of this, and it's worked very, very well.
Thank you. I'll move 21.
Seven yes.
All right, that completes the consent agenda. Item 41 is the first consideration of an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 15,016, rezoning property in the vicinity of 1710 High Street from the C2 General Retail and the Highway Oriented Commercial to Limited NPC Neighborhood Pedestrian Commercial. Council Communication number 11-476. A is a final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by Paul Kester and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
I'll move 41, 41A.
Seven yes.
Okay, item 42 is a request from Councilmember Brian Meyer to speak regarding the driveway at 414 McKinley Avenue. Mr. Meyer?
Is Melanie here? Why not Melanie? It's Melanie Friend's driveway. She'd like to speak about it.
My name is Melanie Friend, and my husband and I purchased the house at 414 McKinley Avenue in 2006. And I've had ongoing problems with the way that the road is run. I have an easement on one side of my yard. However, the last time the road was paved over, last year, the road got pitched the wrong direction, and now all the water runs down my driveway. The neighbor to the east of me has an intake in his front yard that he filled in with concrete and buried underground, and I've brought it to the attention of many, many city phone calls. And there was a work order that was put out that I was told this year it had been opened and completed. It has never been opened, it's still closed. The water that's supposed to be running into that drainage ditch, which would now run under and through the easement down under the one side of my yard, does not run there. I have a sewer manhole, as well as a stormwater manhole, in my front yard. I have a, the stormwater is in the front yard, the sewer is in the driveway. In 2006, backing out of my driveway, I ripped the steering stabilizing bar out from underneath my car, and we had to have it replaced. I called the city, they worked with me, brought out rock, and, you know, the first gentleman that came out said, well, wait, that's a sewer manhole, I'm streets. The second one that came out said, well, I'm not streets, I'm rainwater. And finally, somebody said, oh, well, forget it, we'll just put rock in it, and we'll keep it so that the manhole does not come above surface, so that you don't hit it when you back out. In 2007, because of the waters continuing to run down my driveway instead of down the easement, the front wall of my basement collapsed. The city helped me get ahold of Community Developments and a man by the name of Tim Nancaro, no, Tom Nancaro, and he helped me get funding to have a basement put back under my house. Thirty, $23,000 later, the basement was put under my house. However, they keep, you know, I'm in a stretch of McKinley that is going to be redone, it was going to be redone a couple years ago, you know. And I understand that budgets are budgets, and we'll get to it when we get to it. Over the years, they've taken care of me until two years ago, I would call, and they'd say, it's not our problem anymore, it's yours, it's your driveway. The manhole has creeped up. There is also a work order saying that that manhole has been lowered to grade so that my car doesn't hit it. It's never been touched. The work orders are both signed as complete, paid in full. However, again this year, which is 2011, with the rain, and I understand we can't control Mother Nature, the water's coming in my basement again. So I called. I called Brian after making 10 phone calls to the city and them finally saying, we're not going to come out and look at it, we know what the problem is, there's nothing we're going to do about it, it's not our problem. I called Brian, I called the mayor's office, I called everyone one day as the water was pouring in my basement again. And a man from Community Development named Frank Olman, who was the engineer, got me in contact with a few other people. Phil Delfield, who is the Community Development Program Director, called me and he said, well, don't worry about the water coming in your basement, because of January of next year, you're eligible for us to help you pay to have another basement put under your house. And it really seems odd to me that we would spend $20,000 instead of just putting the rock back in the driveway to make the water go the other way instead of going into my house. I have made several calls until they, my most recent to Brian Meyer again, when the city stopped taking my phone calls or returning any of them. Or they would send someone out from Vector, and the guy would show up, who knows me by first name, and says, hello, Melanie, you know, I can't do anything, I'll take some more pictures, but you know they're not going to do anything. I don't know where you go from here. I have, I do have a few photos of, like, I have hundreds of photos, but my computer broke as I was on my way down, of what the ruts in the driveway get to looking like. It can be looked up on the city's computers and seen that the work orders say that the one drain is open. And, you know, I don't know at 100% that if that drain was open, that it would all go the other way. And I guess my biggest problem is, I have a low car, I drive a Volkswagen Beetle, and right now I have a manhole sticking up this far, and I have a rut on the other side of it about ankle-deep. The last rain, I was standing in knee-deep water in my driveway. And, you know, when you drive out like this, pretty soon I'm going to have to have a whole car repaired. Thank you.
Melanie, I have a question for you. Can you, are those our pictures we can keep?
Yep.
So I'll move to receive and file the pictures. Can you send me or a contact in the city manager's office the rest of the pictures in email, or print them off when you get the ability to do that?
I can email them, no problem.
Does anybody have any questions for?
Yeah. Do you have copies of those other work orders that show completion or whatever, and whoever it was that signed off on?
I do not have copies. My husband works for the city in the sewers, and it was, he was pulled into an office and said, your wife called again. And the work orders were showed to him at that time. This was just about a month ago, the last time I called Brian Meyer. Bill Stowe called me personally, said he would look into it, and they made a committee, and then the committee emailed me back and said, well, you raised your front yard. Well, it wasn't about my front yard, it was about my driveway. So that's kind of where, so they were saying it wasn't their problem. And that was just back here in April, the end of April.
All right.
Pat, do you want to, can I ask?
Yeah. Pat, do you have some other information you think that would be pertinent here?
Pat Kozitz, Deputy Public Works Director. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, we are familiar with the situation here with the Friend's property and the driveway, and the fact that the topography of it does have water running down into it. We are aware of the manhole, it has been adjusted once, we're aware the gravel does wash out at this location. It's always an issue for the Drains Review Committee between what's public responsibility and what's private responsibility. Mr. Stowe made the commitment that he's going to look at this again, and he will. Recently, Melanie has made us aware of that culvert that was plugged. We're going to examine that, see if we can open that, get that water moving through there. So we are looking at it, and we will have a report back on this to you and the council.
Okay, thanks, Pat. I think at this point, to coordinate efforts, it may not be all Public Works thing unless there's more questions. To coordinate efforts, I'd like to refer to the city manager's office and have the city manager, you know, have a point person for Melanie to call, an assistant, or whatever you want to do, Rick. But if we could get one point person to coordinate the efforts across the city, to see if we can get this thing cared of, that'd be great. So my motion would be referred to the city manager's office.
And Mr. Meyer, Councilmembers, we will in fact follow up as Mr. Meyer suggested, and we'll have a contact for you. We'll try to get back to you tomorrow with the name of somebody that you can reach.
And to get a report back to us, and how long do you think it'll take?
Well, I think we should be able to get some preliminary results back within a couple weeks.
Okay. So a report back in four weeks?
Okay. Can I just add another comment to that? Because I had a similar call today. It wasn't as long drawn out as that one was, but it was a business on Ingersoll Avenue. And I think the most frustrating thing with citizens is when they have a water problem and they feel like there's no response. And maybe there's really nothing that the city can do, maybe it really is a private property owner's responsibility, but I think that we just need to really be very specific about how we deal with that. And I know, I personally would like to have some information when those types of ongoing problems result, because they get extremely frustrated, and I just think it doesn't look good for the city overall.
Mrs. Hensley, Councilmembers, I understand that point really well, and I think that's evident from this story, where there's not clarity about what the response is or what the city's going to do. And I'm sure our staff is doing their best, but you're getting conflicting answers, and as Mrs. Hensley, I think appropriately points out, we need to be clear about what it is we can and can't do. And if we can help, we should, and if we can't, we won't be able to. But nonetheless, I think we owe you a clear answer as to what we can do, and we will follow up. And I would, since I've got the floor, Mr. Mayor, Laura, could you please get ahold of Mrs. Friend right now and see if you can get her contact information?
Rick, I'd hope we look into whoever was supposed to have done the job and ever paid and signed off as being complete, and whether or not they really did do the job or didn't do the job.
We'll look into all of it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's quickly, 5:07, we'll go to the hearings. First hearing item is item 48, on the vacation and lease of a portion of the public sidewalk adjoining Mickey's Irish Pub at 206 Third Street for a sidewalk cafe serving alcohol. Council Communication number 11-469, A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
I'll move 48A and B. So this will be effective tomorrow? Is that right?
I think upon publication typically on an ordinance.
Twenty-four hours?
Two weeks.
I'm sorry.
Two weeks to publish the ordinance.
Two weeks to post the ordinance, okay.
Six yes.
Item 49, on zoning text amendment to Chapter 134-982(c)(3a), Central Business Support Commercial, and Chapter 134-1017(c)(3), Central Business Regulations to Prohibit Gas Stations and Fuel Retail Sales Businesses, and to continue hearing and extend the moratorium until October 11, 2011, at 5:00 p.m. Council Communication number 11-449. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
Seven yes.
Item 50, on the 2011 Critical Sanitary Sewer Lining Resolution Approving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate Designating the Lowest Responsible bidder as S.A.K. Construction LLC Boyd Hertz, Vice President, $3,550,605. Council Communication number 11-439, A is a motion to approve the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
Seven yes.
Item 51, on 2011 Expanded Street Reservicing Program Contract II Resolution Approving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate Designating the Lowest Responsible Bidder as O.M.G. Midwest Inc., Doing Business as Des Moines Asphalt and Paving, James Gallagher, President, $2,571,375.09. Council Communication number 11-440 is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none?
I'll move this 51.
Seven yes.
Item 52, on a Citywide Fixed-Time Traffic Signal Upgrade Resolution Approving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate Designating the Lowest Responsible Bidder as Iowa Signal Inc., Wayne Leslie, President, $475,108.53. Council Communication number 11-466, A is the approval of the contract and the bond. Anyone to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move.
Item's been moved.
Seven yes.
Item 53, on the East Indianola Widening Project Phase II Resolution Approving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate Designating the Lowest Responsible Bidder as Riley Construction Inc., Chris R. Riley, President, $3,200,000. lowest responsible bidder as Riley Construction Inc., Chris R. Riley, President, $3,277,103.90. Council communication number 11-448 is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet.
I'll move 53, 53A.
53 and 53A is moved.
Seven, yes?
Item 54, on the Gray's Lake Shoreline Restoration, the Resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and to receive and file the bids, council communication number 11-465.
Question. On this item here, to receive and file the bids, are we saying that we're not going forward with this project?
Mrs. Hensley, council members, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
The bids were 40% over the estimate and our plan is to reevaluate the design for this and go out to bid again in an attempt to lower the prices so they would fall within pricing. Don Tripp, anything you want to add to that?
Because the funding source, the way I read the funding source, it looked like we were recommending that dollars be transferred from the urban conservation projects in addition to the REIT dollars.
Mayor County and members of city council, our plan, as the city manager outlined, is to rebid this. There are two or three reasons we think this is high. One of them is the time schedule. We required the construction and planting of the plants to be in 2011. We're going to delay that to 2012. We think that'll get more bidders. The two bidders we have are fairly comparable in terms of their costs, but they're large companies. We did not get the bids from the smaller companies that we'd like to get. And there are some other issues in terms of the way the project can be staged, what they have to do with materials that I think will contribute to bringing the cost down. So we'd be prepared to move ahead, except we think we can get a better price.
Okay. Very good. I'll move item 54 then.
Don, did you get a final recommendation from the Gray's Lake Committee on this?
No, we haven't. Yeah, their recommendation was to proceed with the original construction, but our thought at this point is to try to bring it back within budget.
So will you be able to bring it back yet this year? Is that the plan?
I think so. Right. Yeah, for a warrant of contract potentially this year, but not necessarily completion this year. Right.
Seven, yes?
Item 55, on the Southwest 9th Street and Dartway Intersection Improvements Resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation, Kurt J. Rasmussen, President, $757,866.8. Council communication number 11-446, A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
I'll move 55, 55A.
56, on the Tonawanda Drive Ravine Improvements Resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Corel Contractor Inc., Grant S. Corel, President, $2,341,015. Council communication number 11-461, A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet, and B is approving a supplemental agreement number one to the professional services agreement with H.D.R. Engineering Inc. to perform additional design and construction phase services for Tonawanda Drive Ravine Improvements Project not to exceed $125,731. Council communication number 11-447. Anyone to speak on any of these items?
I'll move 56A and B.
Okay, Ms. Moore?
I was looking through this and I had, everybody received it, I had questions on the trees that are being planted and there's several issues that arrived. One is plant size, minimum two-inch caliper. Even though our beautification standards say maximum two-inch, here we go again seeing a minimum of two-inch. There's other issues that I see as I go through here. Beginning today, we now have a municipal arborist on board, David Yon, came here from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. He's very well-recognized and known around the country. He happens to be a registered consulting arborist with ASCA, which is the highest recognition you can get in the field of arboriculture. I would like, you know, I'll go ahead and vote for this, but the tree planting issue and tree protection issue, I would like to have run by David and the species selection and size and all that to gain his opinion on it.
Which we can do without delaying the project, correct?
Yeah. Mr. Moore, Mr. Mayor, council members, you'll be happy to know, Mr. Moore, that we've already had discussion about that very point with our city engineering department and they are prepared to go back and look at that particular specification, work with our municipal arborist, and we'll make the changes necessary to make sure it's done properly.
Seven, yes?
All right. That completes our hearings at 5:17. Let's go back now to item 43, which is from Councilmember Brian Meyer to discuss competitiveness of Des Moines' building codes and regulations for repurposing of structures. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this goes to a slew of emails that both Mr. Moore and I were involved in regarding the repurposing of the old Godfather's Pizza on Southeast 14th Street. And the reason I'm looking at this is there was a perception that, whether it's accurate or not, that the city is hard to deal with when you're dealing with the regulations and the codes. And so as part of this motion that I'm going to make, and I'd also like to include what we talked about this morning is a investigation into whether we can do more to aid people that repurpose these structures with the use of tax abatement or how do we best sort of steer people towards repurposing these structures instead of building new stuff either in the city, on a vacant lot, or in the suburbs? Because there are a lot of old structures out there that could be of use to folks and I think they look at them, they take a hard look at them and they just, it's easier just to build a new building somewhere else. And so what I'd like to do is add that review of tax abatement to this motion, but also refer this to the Plan and Zoning Commission, RNO Subcommittee, or any other commission that would have jurisdiction over making recommendations to the city council. I don't know if anybody else wants to comment?
Yeah, I would. I think we see these empty buildings sitting around our city and all they do is just continue to deteriorate. They're just going to set there vacant. No one takes care of them. And it'd be great to have them recycled, so to speak, rather than new ones going in. So I just think it's a very good idea, Brian.
And I would just add to that, and we've had this discussion before, I think it's also the issue of people dealing with this project when it's a once-in-a-lifetime type of situation that they're, and they're not really sure, they don't understand all the different steps that you have to go through. And I know when we've had other projects similar to that, there's been some extra, for lack of a better term, hand-holding that's been done. And I think that we just need to be overly sensitive to that when we're dealing with the older structures and making sure people understand the process and what they need to be doing.
Rick, I think, you know, I spoke at great length with Phil and he cleared up a lot of misconceptions on this. I commend them on the fact that they bring all the different departments together when they come in to repurpose a building. They have, you know, electrical and plumbing and everybody there. I think the real issue is that if, let's say, myself came in to repurpose a building, I would be overwhelmed by that. And I think we need to see to it that the general contractor or somebody else that understands the business is sitting there with them so they know what's being said. I think we got a lot of issues cleared up on the one Brian and I have been on and I have, I'm encouraging Phil and Cessna to get together so Phil can give a presentation to them as to what we're following for code because our code is virtually the same thing everybody in the area is following. So we're not asking them to do anything they shouldn't that anybody else isn't asking. But I'm going to support Brian's motion wholeheartedly on this.
I want to add something. I remember when Bob and I were on P&amp;Z and I think probably Brian as well, we saw lots of older structures that were asked. Jim Boyd had one over at East 6th and Grand and we had a number of others that we could talk about ad nauseam. I'm sure the council saw them as well. I think there's a way to deal with folks that are trying to repurpose older structures in a way that is historically correct in trying to keep the sense of our fabric out there because I think part of the preservation of that shows how the city's progressed and we have some great older buildings that have been saved. I think we have to have a way to treat a lot of those cases on an individual basis, certainly trying to protect public safety, but actually walking through them. I went through with Jim Grant a couple of structures and a couple of the regulations were so odd that after we looked at it and pulled out the tape measures, it seemed reasonable to rethink how we solve the issue. So I think that we need to look at all those kinds of issues and make sure that we do the right thing for the future of this city. So I support it also.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
These are really great comments and we're going to take them all to heart. I think, Mr. Meyer, your notion of linking together the repurposing of older buildings with a tax abatement strategy is a really good idea and maybe there's a way to get more bang with your bucks, so to speak, if we do that. I've got a lot of confidence in Phil Dellafield and his staff. They have really shown a lot of progress in recent years to try to make our codes as user-friendly as we can. I know there are lots of issues out there that they encounter that you hear about from constituents, so we always need to continue working on it and trying to make the system better. But I've got a lot of confidence in Phil and his folks. And I think that the task that you're tossing their way is one that they're up to and I'm sure they will do a good job. And it's always going to be a challenge with the older buildings because they were built under older codes and often when you have to comply with new standards, it is a heck of a challenge. And I think that's the issue that the mayor in particular is talking about. But we will look at this. We'll spend some time and effort trying to see if we can make sure that our system is as friendly towards older buildings as we possibly can be. It is certainly in the city's interest to do that and I think we've done it pretty effectively in many locations, but let's try to work on it again and I know Phil will do a great job with it. So thanks for the motion. It'll be a priority for us.
Seven, yes?
And it takes us to item 44, from Councilmember Skip Moore to speak regarding the signage at the Bright Grand View Clubhouse. Mr. Moore?
As everybody's aware, we've got a very benevolent person that's donated $950,000 to the new clubhouse there. I believe that the agreement states that that person has a right to their own signage with approval of Parks and Rec. And the person donating money had a nationally-known graphics artist approach her with a proposal on a sign which she agreed to on January 6th. And now it's after, it's more than seven months later and they don't have approval or disapproval from Parks and Rec. The person who's doing the signage has agreed to seek and find the funding for the sign and they've stayed, they've missed several opportunities and they would like to get moving on fundraising, but they can't till there's approval. And I'd just like to know where we're at on either approving or disproving of the signage at the new clubhouse.
Mr. Moore, council members, if I might, I've talked to our park staff and the park support. They are in the process of reviewing the proposed sign. I understand they've sent it to their golf committee. The golf committee will look at it and then I think report back to the full park board. The full park board will then get a recommendation back to the council on that matter. I think they're looking at the second meeting in August for that to occur and hopefully that's acceptable. Mr. Galloway, I see you're sitting there. And then my suggestion is the council would take a look at it and take it from there. But I think it's on track, Mr. Moore.
I guess I'd like to recommend maybe the mayor would appoint maybe three members from the council to take a look at it before it comes back to the council.
Okay.
Well, I think the other thing too, though, that we need to remember is we have the Public Art Foundation that has been established by the council and then...
I think they went to look at it and they decided that it was in a park and it was a sign and didn't want to...
Okay.
Yeah. So then maybe come back to the council by the 29th of August yourself. I think that'd be fine.
Okay.
I'll move 44.
Seven, yes?
All right. 44I, from Councilmember Skip Moore to discuss the configuration of lanes and sidewalks on the Grand Avenue Bridge over Walnut Creek, over the Walnut Creek Project.
I continue to receive calls about basically should the sidewalk be on the south side or the north side of the bridge. Friday, I met several of the neighborhood residents out there and they want to know what they could do and I thought maybe we should bring this back to the council. We've all got a letter here. I don't know if we need to receive and file it since it came in our packet, but if we do need to receive and file it, I'll make that motion. I would like to see staff sit down with the Waterbury Neighborhood Association again and discuss the configuration of that bridge and which side there should be a sidewalk on or whether it should be both sides of the bridge.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and refer this back to the city manager and there is a recommendation or their question about the north side versus the south side. And if we could at least look at that, but I know that there's some real restrictions that we need to be sensitive to as well. And I think it's just really important, we've had several meetings on this and the last meeting I thought was an excellent meeting where we had, this council chamber was full. To be perfectly honest, I'm surprised that you've gotten calls because I've not gotten one call or email since that meeting. So this is, I know it's important and I'll refer it back to the city manager for review and working with the engineer's office.
Seven, yes?
All right. Takes us to communications and reports, item 45, from Kevin Sekaline of 1146 East 8th Street to speak regarding allowing more than one food vendor on one parcel. Kevin?
My name is Kevin Sekaline. I live in 1146 East 8th, Des Moines, Iowa. First of all, I would like to show the council that the trailer that I'd like to put on that parcel or parking lot. When I put on the permit, when I go to permit center that asks for permit to set food trailer there, they said, "Well, I am unable to do it because the city code only allowed me put one food stand there." Then I've been looking for now the location. I couldn't find any location that is proper for my food trailer. When I filed the 1805 and I also talked to permit center again, they told me to come and speak out. The reason I really wanted to do that, I want, I worked for HP Computer, I worked for Citigroup for 20 years and I've been sitting in my office all day and get air conditioning all the time. When I come out and I can feel the warm air, the heat from the sun, I feel good. I release my stress. I want to do this for everybody in Des Moines. I want everybody to enjoy outside. Then I start travel every city, like New York City, Washington DC, LA, California, San Diego, San Diego, Canada, Detroit, Chicago, I mean everywhere. And everybody like have food stand and trailer to sit next to each other. And I look back, city of Des Moines tell me that one food trailer have required three parking lot. And then 1805 was have 60 parking lot. I just wonder the reason why they not allow me put more than one on that one spot. It's not about me, it's about everybody in Des Moines here. People came from everywhere.
Mr. Manager, I think that we have a request here to review that and I think that if somebody would want to, with your permission, we'll refer it to the manager and look at the codes that are in place and see what possibly the rules are and whether it's appropriate to...
to change them to accommodate your situation.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe it would require an amendment to the ordinance, but we'll take a look at that and work with the individual and see what-
Before we, my position is no change. It was negotiated three years ago, so I'll just add that if the motion is to refer it back to the city manager's office, I'm fine with that. To review with him the city code, one that we changed three or four years ago, but my position is pretty firm on it that it seems to work now the way we have it and I'd like to keep it the way it is, but I'll make the motion to refer back and I don't want any changes made by staff.
Can I say one thing? I see the great like bridge and street, everything is great, you know, it looks beautiful, but I want people have a choice, option to enjoy the food also.
We have lots of, I mean, there's lots of places where, I mean, they can be set up. You're wanting to put it in, I know where you want to put it and it's, where do we, you know, Skip and I talked this afternoon, it's like if we allow one more, then we have to allow three more and then we have to allow four more. And that was the problem we were getting into three or four years ago is we just had everybody stacked up and wanting to go into the same area and-
I understand. It seems because of the prevent, prevent two people asked, but that location should be divided by square foot. That's huge parking lot and clean parking lot. It just, I don't see the reason why I cannot put up there.
Okay.
So for that- I have a question for Kevin. You have to get permission from not the property owner, but the people that are renting the property, correct?
Yes, I did.
How much are they charging you to be there if you get permission from the city?
City, city charged me $150 per month and the owner charged me $300.
The owner would charge you $300 to be in that location?
Yes.
And the city of Des Moines is going to ask $150?
Per month, yes.
For a year?
Is that correct?
No, it's not for a year.
For how long is it?
Per month.
For a month?
With food. Yeah, it's $5.50 per year with food.
So if that property, if the guy renting the property could get 10 vendors in there, he's going to get three grand a month off the vendors?
He also said he's paid a much of money for tax, property tax. He said, he just think the parking lot just empty there. There used to be some kind of gas over in that, that's why the parking lot is so huge because the tank, gas tank was in the middle. Now they take that out, so the, now the parking lot just useless. If someone coming in, making some money, make people enjoy and live in Iowa, in Des Moines, then the money will come taxable. Then I pay tax to city of Des Moines, I also pay tax for state of Iowa, I also pay tax for federal. So, everything's benefit in one city.
But I don't, I don't think anybody has a problem, this was all negotiated three or four years ago when we did it. I don't think anybody has a problem with you going somewhere. It's just the, you know, as long as you follow the other rules, there's lots of other rules involved. It's just the having everybody in one place together, it just, it doesn't work.
Right. Can I, can I jump in? I mean, I think what Brian and everybody else is saying, I think is what I believe and that is, if it came down to us supporting any one of the food vendors out there, you know, we, we had no problems with almost any of them if they abide by the ordinance. But it created this big community issue, so we worked with all of them, we worked with the partnership and all kinds of groups and we came up with this compromise. And I think what you're hearing is, you just have to live within the rules that are there. That doesn't mean you can't do it, you just may not be able to do it exactly the way you want it to.
Right. That's why I come up here and give me an explanation why the huge parking lot and why I unable to do it. And depending, New York City-
There's rules.
Los Angeles, they do next to each other. They're a great city. Chicago.
The reason is, is because we had a huge battle three or four years ago on this. The neighborhood associations came to me and asked me to look at it. We had to make sure that we had rules. This is the rules that were a compromise agreement. A lot of people wanted to completely ban them. Some people didn't want any regulation and we came to this agreement that this is what everybody signed off on that was in those meetings. And obviously you weren't in the meetings, but this has a long, long history here. We're trying to explain to you why it is that way.
Right, I understand. But I just want to speak out to bring the reason why around the world do it, why Des Moines, Iowa cannot do it. I went to Japan, Korea, Thailand, Laos, Cambodia, also different country, they give enough space to each other to enjoy alive. People need to get out of the house instead of sitting in the house all the time.
The only thing I'll say, the only thing I'll say-
Well, let's, I-
Can I just make one more statement?
Okay.
Well, if we can close the hearing then.
Yeah, I don't want to debate it anymore. We appreciate your input. You know, I think you've heard pretty much how the council feels about it. We've been through this a number of times and we're trying to, you know, do the best we can to see what we can do for you, but I don't, this, we're not in a position where we're in a debating situation here. We're certainly appreciate your bringing the issue to us and I'll ask the manager to give us a sort of a closing position and then we'll, let's go ahead and vote.
Mayor, councilmembers, it seems clear from this discussion that there's not support here at the council table to amend the ordinance and sending it back to me isn't going to change that fact. So, I would suggest at this point, given your, there are statements here this evening that you'd simply receive and file the request.
I'll move to receive and file, but I want to make sure that you get a copy of the regulations and understand what the requirement is.
We'll do that. We'll make sure you-
So I'll move to receive and file.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I've finished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven yes?
Item 46 from Angela Neemers of 1512 Park Street, number four, to speak regarding various issues.
Thank you for this opportunity, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Angela Neemers. I currently receive my mail at 1512 Park Street, apartment number four, and the phone number is there is 515-274-1824. I have resided in the Sherman Hills District since February 15th, 2004, and I was in before the council on another issue at my old address of 708 16th Street, also apartment number four a while back. Anyway, as a former landlord and small business owner in the north of Grand neighborhood until March 9th of 1999, I wanted to address the city council in regards to multi-unit family dwellings and commercial zone property primarily made of brick or adobe with flat roofs. In the 1970s in the city of Altoona, a mechanical repair shop that worked mainly on diesel semis exploded, causing the permanent disability of one worker and the instant death of the second worker because when that flat-roofed brick building exploded, the flat roof beat and came down on the second worker. And it was found that without proper ventilation, diesel or octane natural gas fumes are explosive. Now, the ordinances for the city of Altoona were put into effect and this type of explosion is now rare. On this species of birds, the creator made pigeon poop or its fumes hazardous to the human body. In my lifetime, I know of two Des Moines residents, one who is handicapped because the pigeon poop or its fumes caused the degeneration of the retina in her eye. So she is permanently handicapped. There's no cure. I knew the late Judge Anthony Cottelli and the pigeon poop or its fumes caused the degeneration of his lungs and there again was no cure. And I spoke to him a week before he passed. There will never be a pigeon poop foundation or awareness fund because it just doesn't happen to that many human beings. I've known two and I don't know that science will ever figure out which of us will be determined to contract degenerative retinas or lungs from pigeon poop or its fumes. But Judge Cottelli filed a lawsuit before he died because he did not want this to happen to another human being. So he won his lawsuit and I just wanted to make the city aware of this lawsuit because I, like Judge Cottelli, I don't want other people to have this happen to them. Now undocumented chemical laboratories are just plain illegal, period. And we in Des Moines have seen what rolling meth labs in automobiles have done and we have seen the damage of meth labs in wood frame buildings. But let me explain that a chemical laboratory in an adobe or red brick structure, no matter what color it's painted with a flat roof, is just as dangerous without a proper ventilation system and if it's not up to code. The brick absorbs the methane fumes or whatever is being made that's undocumented, but the ventilation system still, if it is not up to code, those fumes are still in there and who knows? I don't, I'm not a chemist, I'm a biologist, but I do know my periodic table. To me, any kind of undocumented chemical laboratory in a red brick building with a flat roof could be just as harmful to anybody living in there. And that brings me to the address of 718 15th Street in Des Moines, Iowa. And since 2004, I have observed this structure with just confusion. I have seen it yearly deteriorate, knowing that it does get inspected yearly. I have observed the occupancy and possibly the ownership change hands like a revolving door. No responsible department for the city, meaning neither the inspectors nor the code enforcement, are doing anything about this building. Pigeons still live under the roof of this building. The tenants are still paying rent to a property owner that is watching his own property decay and is putting no money back into it, oh, to bring it up to code. Okay, there's a simple solution to the pigeon issue, put up birdhouses. The pigeons will leave and the roof and ventilation system can be repaired.
Could you wrap it up real quick here, please?
Yes, I think that's it. I'll just stop.
I thank you, Ron.
I'll move to receive and file.
It's been moved to receive and file.
Six yes?
Item 47, petition requesting sidewalks be placed on East Park Avenue from Southeast 14th to Southeast 18th Street. Do we have that petition?
We-
Oh, here we go.
Hi.
Hey, how are you? Diane has a better mic for you.
Oh, okay. May I have this up there for you or do you need? No, well, this goes to him.
Okay.
So it's been laid out.
I got it. Thank you very much.
It's a petition that-
Okay.
I'll move to receive and file the petition.
Diane Smith and-
Oh, favor say aye.
I see Mel at the mailbox here at Des Moines, Iowa, 92012. And this petition-
Would you hold the mic up a little?
Oh, this petition was started in January, or excuse me, February of this year for residents of Virginia Park Apartments and I am also in that neighborhood shopping as well and we would really, really would love to have a sidewalk going up and down Park Avenue. Not only for the people who are disabled in mobility wheelchairs and walkers, but only for also the families that are in the area. We just have a new elementary school over there and they probably would like to send their kids to the school or send them to the store and they probably would like to go up the sidewalk as well too. And we all know Park Avenue is a pretty busy street and we'd like to keep safe and we don't want any more injuries.
Well, thanks for bringing this forward. I'll tell you, we've had this issue come before us before and I think Skip and I have been working on it and others, but we've referred it to the city manager to try and find a way to get this done and so we're working on it. So I appreciate you coming forward and this is very helpful.
Yeah, yeah. Would we have some kind of an answer this year, you think?
Rick, do you want to address this or?
Sure, Mr. Meyer, councilmembers. You had asked when this was on your agenda before to have this at a council workshop, so we are preparing the information for it and it's coming fairly soon. It's either the next one or the one right after that. So we'll be bringing it back to you with a recommendation as to how to proceed.
Can we make sure she gets notified of the council workshop and-
Yes.
And that way you can come and listen to what we're preparing to do. It's just difficult because it's a long stretch and it's, most sidewalks are paid for by the owners or usually they're put in when, you know, houses are built, but these, all this stuff was built back when we didn't have that ordinance, I assume.
My email is up on the top of the, that's the first page of the petition.
We'll get you the information when we have the workshop, I appreciate you coming in with it.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Move to receive and file and refer to-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. The item passes. Let's now move to item 57, which is approving the designation of a preferred developer as Nelson Development and Construction and Fauch Brothers LLC for the purchase and redevelopment of the Des Moines building, 405 Sixth Avenue and 513 Locust Street, Council Communication number 11-467. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this particular item? Seeing none, Ms. Hensley?
I'm extremely pleased that this is coming before the council tonight. I know that we've all had a high level of interest as we've been watching the Des Moines building and wanting to make sure that it was appropriately taken care of. Personally, I've had contact on this particular building for probably two or three years from a variety of individuals and developers expressing interest, but the overwhelming issue was is they were not able to negotiate or work with the previous owners, they couldn't find the previous owners, and the bank. And the bigger issue was the fact of the cost to rehab the building, even if they were successful in working with them. So, the city took the highly unusual step of gaining control of the building, going through the legal process and that was all finalized, I think it was the end of May, some time around there. And we've gone through a process to make it available for anybody that was interested in the project. This has been a little bit different than probably what, how we've handled previous projects, but I'm extremely pleased with the proposals that came in. I think the city is very fortunate that we had two proposals. The one that is recommended that we awarded to tonight, Nelson Development and the Fauch Brothers, is exciting because as we discussed it with the Economic Development Committee for downtown, it clearly has a wow factor and it clearly allows the building to become a supplement to the Hyatt Hotel down on Sixth Avenue, which I think is good. It's got some other aspects to it and it'll have the market rate apartments in there, which we know have been highly competitive and there's been a big demand for those downtown. So, I'm really excited about this. It's a significant development downtown and it also brings in another company to the city that has not worked in the city, that's got some plans for doing some additional buildings downtown. So I think it's a, it's a win-win all the way around and I'm really pleased with the proposals. I guess I just want to say publicly too, that the other developer has done a lot in the city and I have a high level of respect and regard for him and what he's done, but I think he needs to get some other projects finished before taking on another project right now. So, there might be other people that want to make a comment, but I'm going to move item 57 as recommended by city staff.
Chris?
Yeah, I've watched this closely as Ms. Hensley and the mayor, we had a chance to review this maybe 10 days ago in terms of the downtown economic team, but we, this is, when we had it before us six months ago and started the RFP process, I said, it was really important to me that somehow we bring to life the skywalk over there. This intersection at the Des Moines building, next to the Keck City Center and the parking garage there, it used to be one of the busiest skywalk corridors and we've had this blank, empty skywalk corridor for the longest time. And I said here, I really wanted to prioritize whatever proposals came back that really brought to life the skywalk there. Well, I'm not nearly as creative as a lot of the architects in town and I think what's before us very much does that, brings it to life, except it really removes it. And in this case, I think what we have is one of those cases where less is more. They're going to peel away part of the back, what's called the annex building. I've been on- And it's kind of a messed up hodgepodge building in that part of it, the annex. And I, I just think taking that part of the building down, removing some lower-class office space in the downtown, when we have a glut of it right now, and bringing to life through a little courtyard area is brilliant thinking. It makes the project affordable. And for that reason alone, I'm really inclined to support it. I'll tell you a second reason why I feel really good about it. The developer has proven themselves over and over about doing good projects in, in our city. And I, I think they're always forthright in, in what they say. This is a case where I think the developer could have come in today and said, you know what, I'll, I'll give you a million and a half or two million or three million dollars for the building. And everybody would have gone, wow, wow, wow. And six months from now, they'd come back and say, well, but we need gap financing here. We need a little bit more money. And, and what you realize is, you know, they're going to come to the city for whatever that gap is. So if they overpay for the building, they're going to come back and want more help from us. I think they've dealt with us in a very honest and forthright way. And I don't expect them to come back for additional incentives on the property beyond what they've identified in their proposal to us. And so I feel really good about it. Some people may say, well, that's a pretty small amount of money for a downtown building. But I would, what I'd say is, I appreciate the way they're approaching this with openness and transparency. And instead of offering us a couple of million dollars, only to ask for incentives of a couple of million dollars is a better way to deal. So I'm supportive of it.
I might just add, one thing I forgot, I neglected to specify was the actual project cost. And they estimate it's going to be in that twenty-two to twenty-five million dollars. So this is a significant investment. The other thing in making the motion, I guess I would just ask that we have a, a timeline. I think, you know, sometimes we get into these projects where they tend to drag and I'm sure that they won't allow that to happen. But I think that we need to have a timeline with some benchmarks that we need to hit just to make sure that we keep it moving because I think it's in everybody's best interest there. And I don't want to say, you know, what that would be here tonight, but would ask that you work with the staff so that we can have a, a clear time schedule as to how we see it moving forward.
Okay. Skip?
Well, I'm going to support this, but I would offer a friendly amendment to start with. And that would be that the developer and whoever ends up with the building agree to keep the name, the Des Moines building. I think that needs to stay there. And I could see the right people coming in, want to change the name of it. Also, I'm pleased to see that they're going to be using geothermal wells and building some green space. This is not a motion by any means, but I would hope that they would take a look at that green space and make it as green as possible, such as pervious pavers and, and that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
I, I agree with everything that's been said. I think Nelson Development has proved that they can get a project and can bring it to completion. I will also say that I have had, and I would just turn to staff on this, some comments that, there's those in the community that didn't think that this project had enough exposure, that there could have been a broader interest, either from larger regional or national people to, to take on a project such as this. And, but they didn't really have an opportunity to, to look at it. So I would look at how we, in the future, advertise and, and move forward on these kinds of projects so that as many folks as possible can get the opportunity to, to have a look at, at this kind of a project. But I, too, will support moving forward on it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make it, there's no other comments from council members. I appreciate your comment about the competitive element here and you're absolutely right. I think whenever we do these projects, one of our goals is to make it as competitive. The more competition, the better, would be our attitude. And I think council has reinforced that. Your comments certainly do. In this case, it's worth pointing out that in this instance, although we had two formal submittals during the whole process where there was talk about this project and talk about the building being available, we had about eleven different developers, four of whom were from outside of the state of Iowa, expressed an interest in the building. And that doesn't include several contractors and architects. So there were, you can always do more and better, I suppose, but, but there was, in this case, a fairly competitive environment with a number of developers who had an interest in it and did talk to our staff and did express that interest in ways. As it turns out, there were only two formal bidders when it got right down to it. I think one of the, one of the issues was timing. We had to get, we had to get the bids in. They have to submit their application for historic tax credits. I think it's by the first week or so in August. That is a critical schedule and not everybody's going to be in a position to do that. These folks are able to do so and were able to get us a proposal into us to do that. So I take your comments to heart, Mr. Mayor and council members, on the competitive element. We'll always try to do better. In this case, we did have a fairly high degree of interest in terms of folks who submitted bids.
Christine, did you accept my amendment on that, on the name?
I'll accept it, but I'm not sure that, they're shaking yes, so that's fine. On the Des Moines, on the naming.
Thank you.
Seven yes?
Fix item fifty-eight, preliminary approval, the conceptual development plan for the redevelopment of thirty-eight oh one Merle Hay Road by Richard Eichner, Council Communication number eleven dash four fifty-nine. Anyone to speak on this item? Seeing none?
I would go ahead and move item fifty-eight. And I think we all received a letter from Merle Hay Neighborhood earlier today in support of it, so.
Still no payday or pawn shops, right?
Nope. It's up for debate. Whatever you want, Rich.
Seven yes?
Never. Yeah.
Item fifty-nine, an extension of temporary moratorium to prohibit new freestanding liquor stores in C-three, C-three A, C-three B, or C-three R zoning districts and temporary moratorium on the commencement of a business selling alcoholic liquors in the C-one district and at any location citywide which has not received a conditional use approval from the zoning board of adjustment until September two thousand and eleven, Council Communication number eleven dash four fifty-one. Is there anyone to speak on this item?
I will move item fifty-nine. I might just add, the question was raised when we first started talking about this, whether or not the convenience store up in Clear Lake, Skip?
Pardon?
The convenience store up in Clear Lake?
Yeah.
The whole first aisle, as you walk into the left, has now become.
Liquor store.
Liquor store.
Well, that's one reason I asked, is I'd been in there on the way back from Minneapolis.
Yeah. It's amazing the change. And that's just happened.
I saw another one. I can't remember where it's at.
The whole first aisle. I'll move.
Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes?
We have one extra item that is, I'm asking approving the appointments of the Airport Authority Board. We ask for city council members to submit some nominations of that. We also ask that there be at least two of those members be new members and with three potentially to be people that had served on there before. Those members that have received, the incumbent members, shall we call them, Ed Hansel, Liz Ward, and Jim Erickson. And two new members, or at least on this authority, that have not served on the airport board are Kurtie Levy and Mark Feldman.
May I ask when we're going to have the twenty-eighty agreement in front of us?
And I think that that's part, one of their charges, that they're going to be working on that with staff and the legal department to finalize that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask our city attorney, I think he's actually got something ready to go on that.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city manager. Council members, we have a draft document that we're ready to submit to FAA. And in fact, the sooner that we can submit to FAA, the better. The, the document itself doesn't require council approval at this point in time and will come back because it, it has to be approved by the, the FAA. And there are a number of items, however, with the FAA's review that may or may not affect how council would ultimately vote. But a draft of that document in draft form is available for council to review. And any response that we could get back, we plan on sending it to FAA this week. So if you have any comment on the draft form, please let me know. Otherwise, it'll go to the FAA this week and then be back in front of council for final approval and adoption in the future.
All right. So council will get an opportunity to look at it?
I think it's set it out.
I believe it's out already. Yes. I believe so.
We understand about that.
I, I, I think your nominations are, are really strong. And if you're looking for a motion, I'd, I'd move it. I think the two new people are, are outstanding members and I've kind of been proud that Jim Erickson's been my appointee for a long time. And so I'm happy he will be back.
Okay.
I think it'll be a great group.
Yeah.
Seven yes?
All right. And if we could have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move, move to adjourn.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
We said adjourn. Thank you all for attending. Vote.[1733.21]